The meeting, come to the board please. Public comment, anybody who wants to make a public comment, come to the podium, state your name and address, you've got three minutes or so, I'll probably stop you. Okay, next order of business, Dr. Morris, superintendent of Oyster River and Wharf School District is going to update us on activities at the schools. Welcome, Dr. Morris.
Thank you.
So, thank you once again for allowing me to speak and giving you an update on schools. So, I thought I would soften the blow by talking about good news related to money. Okay. So, you know, as Julie knows and you all know, we're making estimates, they are best guesses a year in advance, and the actual numbers have now settled. We had thought that Lee's estimate was going to be 66 cents, and it is actually going to be 53 cents. So, that's probably a result of the construction in Durham and their new property coming online and having an impact on the two small towns. So, I think probably, as always, start out with enrollment makes the most sense. You guys are growing like crazy over here. The Massway School, for the first time since I've been superintendent, and so this is the, my sixth year, beginning of my sixth year, is now larger than the Moheramet School, a complete reversal of where we were only five years ago. So, the actual numbers break down this way. Massway has grown to 352 students compared to last year where it had 320. So, the good news is, the school is growing. The bad news is, it's going to catch up to you in the funding formula, so I don't know how the next budget will fare, but as the numbers go up, it's a 50% enrollment, 50% valuation, so we are now pushing the envelope of the Massway School in terms of capacity. And I would just share with Brian, when we're doing our budget on the school side, we'll be having to talk about how can we accommodate more students in Lee. The Moheramet School has 343 students, it had 373 last year. The middle school is at 660 students compared to 656 students last year, so it's pretty nominal, but I would say that five years ago, the predictions were that the middle school was going to have around 500, 520 kids, and it hasn't moved much from the 660 range since I've been here. And the high school has grown to 793 students, last year it was 766 students. So, everybody asks me, why do you think the enrollment's going up in Lee? And I think it's, stock is turning over, housing stock is turning over, and when it turns over, there seems to be children involved in the new home, and that's the best we can guess, because our birth rates in the district haven't changed significantly, it's the in-migration of students that's been the difference. So, I gave you in addition, do you have any questions on enrollment? Okay. So, school board's goals for the upcoming year and the school board's goals for the past year on the front page, and I won't go through them because you guys can read just as well as I can. But I wanted to give you an update on the middle school. I want to thank Scott for participating and representing the town of Lee. We have formed a much broader community-based superintendent's facilities committee related directly to the middle school. And this particular year, what the committee is doing is looking at every option under the sun. Can the building be renovated yet, once again? You know, does it make sense to have two K through eight schools using, building on two Massway and Moheramet? Does it make sense adding on to the high school and putting the middle school there? And so forth and so on. So, it's just like, how many ideas can people think of? And then, what we'll do over the course of this year is, tear them apart. Does this idea make sense? Well, not really, you know, and then, why? Or what are the benefits of each idea and what are the deficits of each idea? The goal for the committee is, by the end of this school year, to have a recommendation to share with the school board. So, this will be basically a planning year in the sense that we're trying to get an understanding of what we could do, what we should do. And if we get to that point, it's always the F right with committees, when we get to that point, and the board hears the report out and the recommendation, and there's a choice, then we'll spend the next two school years talking in the community about why that's the best choice for the schools. And then ultimately, three years from now, we would be putting a bond out, a warrant out for a bond for whatever that decision is, whether it's a new school or renovated school, a relocated school, all of that. So, we're about three years away from asking the voters for support. We continue to expand our foreign language program. We did that this year with Chinese. Now, we're offering Chinese at the middle school and high school. That expansion was at no cost to taxpayers. It's a relationship we have with UNH and the Confucius Institute. They're providing us with the teachers, so it was an easy decision to the school board to expand Chinese into the middle school and high school. We also expanded French and Spanish into grade six. We did that without adding any burden to the taxpayers by realigning the schedules of the teachers we currently had. So, we're pretty excited about that. We have implemented a later start time, about 40 minutes later, 35, 40 minutes later, for our middle school and high school kids. Really means that there's potential for them to get more sleep in the morning, it all depends on how and what's going on in their household. All we can do is make it an opportunity, and ultimately, we'll find out whether it's taken, because we did a baseline survey last May, and we're going to do the same survey this upcoming May, and then compare the gather and see whether starting later actually afforded our adolescents more sleep. So, that's where we are on that one. We continue to be concerned about the mental wealth and wellness of our students. You know, that was generated from student suicide several years ago, and we are concerned about the stress that we place on our students. A lot of high expectations by our school system, high expectations by our parents, and whether our expectations are reasonable and rational to have on 15, 16, 17-year-old kids, so we continue to investigate that. The middle school itself changed its direction in how they're approaching education. They have gone to a competency-based model. Basically, what that means is, you tell the students upfront what they need to achieve at a given grade level, and if they achieve it, they've reached competency. If they haven't, it's not an F or a D, it's reteach. Reteach, reteach until they get the concept. So, the idea here is that the student and the teacher have a pact to reach the competency level, and it's not a matter of, oh, well, you didn't get it, I'm going to move on to the next chapter. So, it's a pretty dramatic departure. Our middle school teachers are amazing. When we floated this as an idea, it's been two and a half years in the making, a lot of enthusiasm by the vast majority of our teachers, like any new idea, as you guys know, it's not always 100%, but we took a survey, it was 85%, which we thought was pretty incredible for a direction. Test scores, in terms of smart balance, we still exceed the state, and that's a statewide assessment. And SATs, which is a state and national assessment, we've improved dramatically in our math over the last couple of years. We're almost 24% higher than we were three years ago, and that's due to a system-wide reassessment of how we're doing math and when we're doing math. The biggest catalyst to the improvement was the fact that we've gone from 130 kids taking algebra in grades seven and eight, mostly eight, to 130 out of 160. And so, that started three and a half years ago, and those kids are now taking the SAT in bigger and bigger numbers, so their success is much higher. And we've also realigned our elementary program and our high school program, so that's why we're seeing the dramatic improvements we are there. Five years ago, we were the fifth highest performing math program in the state at high school level, and for the last two years, we've been the second highest, only handover head scores higher than ours. And then, I just want to make sure, you know, I put out enough notices, but no matter how many times I talk about it, it's always, there's always somebody who hasn't heard. We are having a community forum on diversity on Wednesday night, you're all welcome to attend. It's not going to be a sage on the stage kind of talk at people, it's going to be a more participatory forum, where we're going to do it in the cafeteria instead of the auditorium, people will be at shared groups in the cafeteria. We have multiple presenters, parents from our district who've been involved in a host of issues, from race to gender identification to sexuality to exceptionality, and how we've dealt either successfully or unsuccessfully with those issues. So, I think it's an important conversation that the district's going to have, and I hope that you all can find a way there. So, I'm open to questions.
I've got a couple. You did mention about starting late times, but you also mentioned about trouble getting bus drivers.
Yeah, yeah. So, we started the school year, so the two issues are really unconnected, people are connecting them, but they're not connected. The issue of a shortage of bus drivers would have caused us a hiccup this year regardless of what system we used. And right now, we're down to one problem area, which is the Epping Lee line, and as soon as we have a driver to point in that direction, we will, and that will bring us to boy policy of no longer than a 40-minute bus drive. So, most of the bus drives are 30 to 40 minutes. These two runs are still at 50 minutes, and so they're too long. So, we've been aggressively hiring, and it's tough to fill the spots. We started out five short, then we hired, so we'd be four short, then we hired, we'd be three short, and then we have somebody go out for paternity leave. So, now, we're backed up four being short, and we keep on trying to get ahead, but we keep on somewhat spinning our wheels, no pun intended. But we're being pretty aggressive at advertising. We're also negotiating with the bus drivers this year, and one of the board's goals is to make sure that Oyster River's drivers are competitive, if not ahead of the game in relation to salary and benefits, which is an interesting place to start from negotiations, which normally are trying to contain costs, but in this situation, we're really facing a shortage that's driving our need to be competitive in terms of wages and benefits. So, that's the process. So, when we get to finish negotiations, it won't necessarily be the typical 3% or less, because 3% or less won't make us competitive. I would share with the select board that we are one of the few school systems left in the state that run our own bus fleet. And I know that's been a conversation different times in the history of the district, but let me share a story, and you'll understand why, at this point in time, I think having our own fleet is a good thing. Both Portsmouth, well Portsmouth and Oyster River decided to start late together. They started their late start this year, we started our late start this year. And for us, it involved an additional bus, additional driver, pretty manageable, you know, driver's about $30,000 a year, a bus amortized over, you know, over five years is probably $15,000. For Portsmouth, it was nearly $300,000. And that impacted Greenland, because they send their kids over to Portsmouth for high school, they had another couple hundred thousand dollars of increased cost. So, between the two school systems, you know, it was upwards of a half million dollars. That's because they're using a private provider, and the private provider has an opportunity to make money, they're going to make money. Our job is not to make money, our job is to get the kids to school safely in as efficient a way as possible, so two different missions. I would tell you, three years ago, I was kind of jealous of the school systems that had private providers, because their costs were, you know, relatively contained, but they do it on the backs of their drivers, you know, no benefits, you know, no job security, that kind of thing. And so, you know, when I looked at it, when I first became superintendent here, I thought, well, there's a way to save money, we could go to a private provider. Kind of glad it didn't happen, you know, in retrospect, because we're literally much more in the driver's seat, again, no pun intended, in relation to having our own fleet, our own drivers, and our own buses than other systems. Brian just attended a workshop, and he was telling me that some of these school systems across the state of New Hampshire are really held captive, because there's only one private provider in their area, so they get to name their price. So, the only thing else I would add on that is, you know, we really have some really capable drivers who really care about the kids, and I think that's because the school system and the towns care about the drivers. And so, I think it's a reciprocity that goes there when you have your own people versus contracting out.
Thank you. Second question is about the mental health and wellness, it's always an issue. Do you have like a social media policy?
We do, yeah.
I just wondered, because it is, obviously.
Out of control.
Yeah, it's out of control.
My least favorite subject.
I'm sure it is.
You know, so, you know, my issue, you know, for students, of course, is, you know, the differentiation between fact and fiction, but doesn't that carry into our adult life as well?
Yes.
And then, you know, you know, everybody has a right to their opinion, but social media seems to take that opinion and magnify it, you know, 100 times, and it doesn't help us resolve issues. I'm sure you guys face the same thing. We face it on our side as well. So, you know, maybe that makes me old, but I'm not really a fan of social media, but I don't think it's about age, I think it's more about, you know, being thoughtful.
Thank you. Questions on the floor?
Yes, I have one. I'd like to know, do you have any initiatives, programs relative to homeless children?
Yes, we do, yeah. My assistant superintendent, Todd Allen, is in charge of our homeless student program. In any given moment, we might have, in our district, we're very fortunate, maybe a half dozen to less than 10, you know, it changes.
Yes.
But our district is interesting, because our poverty level in the district, the number of kids who live in poverty is around 7%. If you went to Manchester, that number could be 60%. So, it changes the dynamic. For us, it's really paying attention to that small number of kids. We know their names, we should, you know, customizing our program for them. And, you know, the homeless situation is always tragic. You know, we have people living, well, we have a family right now that's holding in Rochester, and they went to school here before they became homeless. And so, under federal statute, you know, we have to educate them, and until they find a permanent location, they're considered homeless under federal law, so we provide the services for them.
Okay. Subject in terms of school bus drivers. How much has the Northwood situation affected you guys in terms of getting drivers? Have they kind of like siphoned off some of your potential candidates?
You know, Northwood is an interesting situation. They may have recruited one of our drivers, but mostly our people are very loyal, and we've been very open about how we've approached negotiations with them, and so they get what we're trying to do. So, I think we lost one person.
Okay. Thanks. Questions on the floor? Thank you, Dr. Morris, appreciate you coming.
Appreciate you having me.
Next item of business, police chief has a full listing of activities.
Actually, four grants that we've applied for and have received, offer of motor vehicle activity, distracted driver grant, step grant, which is extra patrol for motor vehicle violations, DWI patrols, and another e-ticket grant. We have one more cruiser that needs the electronic ticketing system in it, and we were awarded another grant for that. We're busy, they just need your signatures and your blessing, and then they've worked in, and we can start the patrols. You know, it adds extra coverage for the town, gives the guys an extra earning opportunity for overtime, buying gals, and we've always done well with it.
So, you've got enough people to do it?
Yeah, yeah, right now we do it.
Yeah, right, we can do it.
Yeah.
First of all, I want to thank you for all the effort you and your staff must put in applying for these, it's nice to see the amount of material that is coming in, so thank you very much on that. Any questions?
Yes.
No? Yes?
Well, I'm just hoping that we can have a conversation about the money going out and the money coming in, because I spoke with Joy and Clancy today about that. And so, I guess I'd just like to hear from the chief what your thought process is for wanting to make sure that the money goes back into your department, and then I'll follow up with that.
So, what has happened in past years is, we would pay the overtime out of our overtime line item, then when the reimbursements came back from the state, it went back into the general fund. So, what I requested this time is that the actual overtime that we spend out, when it comes back in, goes back into our overtime line item.
And that's so you don't lose, for lack of a better term, regular overtime money?
Correct.
Okay. The other piece of this, obviously, anytime you spend money on wages, there's the other side of it, which are the ancillary personnel costs, and actually, the way we wrote this, it doesn't really put any of that money into the personnel budget where it comes out of. So, that's number one, so I don't know whether we want to address that or not. The second thing is, Ms. Clancy was going to check with our new auditors, or relatively new auditors. The other order that we had didn't have a problem with doing things like this, so we just want to make sure that they're not going to raise an issue come the next audit. Third thing is, I think that this sometimes crosses fiscal years, that by the time this works its way, the program, the hours, and the reimbursement, the money's coming back in a different fiscal year than the year in which it was expended, which just maybe presents some issues. So, I'm wondering if the easiest way to handle this is to simply recognize that some of the money that comes out of the police department overtime account is being reimbursed to the town, and maybe not directly to his department. Otherwise, we could maybe put a line in his budget for grant patrols, because I think we used to do this, and then he spends the money out of that line rather than his overtime budget, and perhaps then we don't necessarily have to put the money back in when we're reimbursed, but everybody can see it and it's understood, oh, yeah, that's the money that we spent on those special patrols, but we also got money back. So, just trying to figure out the best way to do it, because otherwise, obviously, it's just more work. And then, would we want to break it out so that some of the money is going back to the police department and some of the money is going back to the personnel department? Project, I should say. Does that make sense?
Is it possible to set up a different account for this, like a special projects kind of thing, and then keep all the expenses and revenue in that separate place?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we could, we talked about, I would still put it within the police department budget, because it is a police function, but it would be called, you know, grant, grant patrols, and it would just be another line in the police budget.
So, in terms of, there's totals reach one of these grants. Is that the total amount of money available, or is that the amount you're going to be spending on the patrols itself? Because it sounds like there's some additional costs that are going to come to the town.
Right, that's, what they do is, they give you so many hours, and so, they take the hourly rate of whoever's doing it with the retirement and Medicare, and I think it is included, and that's how you tell how many hours you can get out of that block of money that you're given. So, it depends on who does them. So, how many hours you can get.
Okay, but it is covering all the costs?
Yes.
According to police GPS.
Yeah, if we can find out what the best way to do that with the software that we have, accounting system that we have.
Well, it helps accountability anyways.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're ready to move forward? I don't see any issues.
Yeah, well, I had a conversation with Julie today about this whole thing, because my thing was, let's not money the overtime budget.
I understand.
Kind of like, I think what you want to do too, because.
You want to protect that overtime budget.
Money assigned for overtime for your office is regular, if we start spending things out of that, then you have less money where you go over.
Exactly.
Then the next year, well, jeez, you spent $10,000 more, you're supposed to, well, that's because grant came in, but it went into the.
And that's what's traditionally been happening.
Yep. I'm okay with that.
Good. Therefore, I move to accept the defensive driving grant in the amount of $2,028.13 in restock fee. Finance officer apply funds when received to the police overtime budget, you'll deal with that later.
Figure something out.
When we came out of the special duty, like we were doing details, and the money went back in, because everything comes out of that one account, correct? So, it'd be just like doing a road detail, and the money's going back in, it just goes back in, you don't have to create a new account.
Special detail is revolving, right?
Yeah.
So, it's not based on age. I like that.
As long as there's no issue with the revolving fund taking money. No, it does take money in, so, yeah, we could.
So, we don't, state of New Hampshire would be our vendor, you know, the vendor that we're working for, and the money would just come right back in again.
So, we can put it in the special duty, right?
The revolving fund.
Therefore, move to accept the defensive driving grant in the amount of $2,028.13 in restock, the finance officer apply the funds when received to the, what is it again?
The special duty revolving fund.
Special duty revolving fund. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's go through these one by one, and a few room to us. Move to accept the patrol grant presented in the amount of $5,694.44 in restock, the finance officer apply the funds once received to the special duty revolving account. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Move to accept the DWI patrols grant in the amount of $4,018.10 in restock, the finance officer apply the funds once received to the revolving special duty fund. I said it differently three times.
I think we know what it's supposed to be, and we're kind of giving.
I just want to see if you're paying attention. I did hear a second, correct? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Move to accept the e-ticket grant for equipment in the amount of $900, and to instruct the finance officer apply the funds once received to the police department.
Actually, that one, that'll come out of my new equipment line item, and I can go right back into that.
Police Department equipment budget. I got that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Questions carried. Thank you.
My recommendation would be to hold off on this until the end of the meeting, because you have to sign every page.
Oh, that's right, initial.
All right, chief, please. Buy a truck for F-150.
Randy.
Oh, I forgot Randy, excuse me. He was folding papers over there. Randy Stevens, Highway Supervisor, updating the total COVID replacement budget. You guys are running late, I never saw.
Life is tough.
Life is tough. Welcome, Randy.
This is, this is the tunnel, it's going to be like my brother's house, the river here. So, basically, we've raised the road from that point to this point, just short of 700 feet, it would be about three, this is the lowest point. Comes up, the grade comes up here, and very slowly comes up there. It's about a half percent right now, but if you had raised the road three feet at the culvert, it makes it a zero grade, which, you know, it's supposed to have a half a percent, but people are more crowded, and you think I feel this. So, that's, that really is the big thing about taking care of the plumbing, and then there's the, there's a little closer one underneath. So, Julie and I, town administrator myself, met with the engineer last week, and she has applied for some FEMA funding, but she also did up three different types. She's met with New Hampshire Fish and Game, all the wetlands. She, she's met with the Hampshire Fish and Game, all the wetland board and all the stuff you have to do. She's come up with three different types of culvert. I don't know if you read it in the agenda packet or not, but Option two is the, is a culvert that has existed, a squashed metal culvert. And it's a little hard to see in the picture, but There's approximately five feet of fill over that. It's about a, it's about five feet high. And the trouble of these, this type of culvert, that's, if you get 30 years out, you're doing pretty good. The one in there now is 30 years old, that's, the bottom's really starting to get kind of perforated. The other problem of that is you have to get in the stream and install cutoff walls. You have to dig down below the culvert four or five feet, put it on the cutoff wall that the culvert sits on, just so the water can't get under the culvert. That's one of the problems with this one, the water going under it. So if the water's under it and it's over, it rust quicker. It's dry underneath and just water on the top. So option one is a box culvert, concrete box culvert. Basically, that, that'll last 50 years. The estimate on it was 262, and I think the other one, the cheapest one was 210, option two. The problem with that is you have to be in the stream doing the cutoff walls. You also, because you're raising the road three feet, you'd have a fairly, you only need a fairly low opening, but you'd have about eight feet above it, that you'd have to have all concrete. The wing walls at all have to be concrete, so you'd have a fairly small culvert, but you could have all this concrete to hold the roadway. If you get, what I'm saying. We couldn't publish this picture, but I just kind of I didn't get permission, but that's just a, I don't know if you can see it from there. Uh, that's just the wooden bridge, that's option number three, most expensive one. And it's about $300,000. And this all includes raising the road. It's about $50,000 to raise the road. So this has a 75-year life supposedly, especially, might even have more if you take care of it and keep something on it to preserve it. The nice thing about this is the National Heritage Bureau and the DES, they all like this because it's very little stream impact. The abutments actually go out beyond where the culvert is, but just go below the frost level where the abutments. And the bridge is there, so you don't really have any of these high walls that are trying to, trying to hold back, trying to hold the roadway up. So you just put riprap down, from the top of the bridge down. It's all kind of natural, much like this, much like this picture. You can see the slant there, if it's not shown through. So that's the most expensive, I suppose it doesn't seem too bad. We get a FEMA grant, we only have to pay 25%, but what is it? It's a 41% more than option two, which is what's in there now. So the engineer has applied for a pre-disaster mitigation grant. And that's a nationwide grant. It's quite a bit of money in it, but it's, a lot of it's used for planning, like, you know, Scraper Regional might, might get some to do some planning for storm events or whatever, something like that. So there is some, some monies for work, but actual work, but not as much as other grants. So that one's been applied for, I think, due last week. The engineer is also planning on applying, applying for two other FEMA grants. These are HMGP grants, hazard mitigation grant program, that's what it is. And these are sparked by one of them was by the snowstorm last March, and the other one's by the Grafton County flood that happened this spring. Of course, it'd been a lot better if it was in Scraper County, we had a better chance, but anyway, she thinks pretty favorable at Homeland Security that, oh, and I'll make sure you get the grants in and, you know, you have a good chance. Like, like the lottery, but it's pretty expensive tickets, just to get the grants application fee. Oh, of course, D and Lee, we have endangered species, because everybody can produce studies league. So we have the brook floater, which is really a hassle, and that's been located right in, right in the area of the culvert area. Banded sunfish, I don't remember seeing one, but American eel and the wood turtle.
What?
Wood turtle. So that, that really, I'd like to say, D, you, you don't, if, if we use any of the options besides a wood bridge, we have to do a, do a study. And it could cost 4,500 or up, at least 4,500 is the cheapest it would be. Use a wood bridge, they, they just, they wave that back, they feel there's so little impact. So where we're at now is, we're waiting to hear on the grant. She's still going to meet with DES some more. What we're trying to do is see if the slipboard is any, kind of the gut feeling, which, which type of option you like.
What I said to him, that is, if you're going to get 75 years out of a wood bridge, we should go with 75 years, and if it pleases DES and all the aspects of sustainable environment and everything else. I think it's probably the best way to go. It's not that much more money than, than second option.
No, no, it's about 80,000, 80,000 more.
Exactly. And it'd probably look nicer too, for the, but that's my opinion.
Yes, yes.
I think that, I mean, I think it's a matter of cost per year. If you take the total cost across how many years you think it's going to last, which one, which one's getting you the bank for the buck? I think a wooden bridge does.
Can you pass down the picture to the chair?
Yeah, they just needed that.
Okay, I'll, I'll listen to you turn. What's underneath the bridge that comes down? If water, the reason we're doing this because of flooding. So what's stopping the flood from taking out the banks or the supports of the bridge? That's the only thing? There's no rocks or any kind of?
Well, the riprap's good-sized stuff. It's not, it's not big, big stuff. And there's no, there's no fast flow? I mean, it is fortunate there, it's a very slow flow.
Oh, okay.
You know, the lamprey comes up and gradually, gradually, as the lamprey gradually comes up, the water gradually comes up in the swamp on the other side, same way when it goes down. The lamprey moves pretty slow coming up and down, so. At all, I don't think, I've never seen anything that resembles washing, yeah.
Well, the pictures you sent in the agenda packet, I like the looks of the bridge. It looks better than those other two? But yeah, I agree.
Yeah, if you're interested, I guess I'll talk to the, I'll talk to the man actually, the Greg Law, who's the builder and, or the engineer, give you some more pictures of the kind of like what example it would be, what like total it would be.
So what's the deck? Is it deck wood or?
Deck wood, but then you can put asphalt, you put a membrane, you put asphalt over if you want.
The other question I had is the, the cost that you put on those particular things. That includes repaving, the ink, the rope, the terrain?
Yes, $50,000 to build the road up three feet and repave it. Of course, you know, you got, you got three feet right at the culvert, but then it tapers, especially towards this direction, it'd tape us right off really quick.
And when would the town know about the grants or the?
Oh, it'll be quite a while, because the ones we're most likely to get, they have occasion not due until February, so. But the good news is the culvert's not deteriorating as fast as it was.
So can you take, I think you've got your indication in terms of the one we're interested in.
Right.
So can you move forward with the grants? And then when we know if we're going to get any, then can we decide to move forward on all? Because we don't know how much the cost is going to be. We know what the total is, but we don't know what the grant possibly could be.
Yes, yeah, if you get the grant, it's 75%. You get, you, you can do 20, town's 25% share, you can do any kind of services. Just say we decide to do the road ourselves. We can, we can put all our equipment and everything else, like gravel or anything else we might have. We can put that right towards that 25%. As I understand it.
And for planning, the CIP has what number in it right at the moment for this?
Excuse me?
The CIP, what number does it have in there for this particular project?
I believe it has 150, and it has 150 for the total road and background project. And that's the other thing I should mention, the engineer is having a pretty hard time to decide whether to include that project where it's so close. Because it puts the, puts the total up higher. So, but they're encouraging it to put both together at Homeland Security, who's, Homeland Security sort of in charge of standing up FEMA grant. But our engineers talked to people from FEMA and people from Homeland Security, they all say this is a good project, they want to do it, so I don't know. We've, we've applied twice before and we've come real close. We were real close last time. Just didn't have enough money, so. I think, sooner or later, you'll wear them out if you keep applying.
Maybe.
Anything, Julie, anything that I forgot? Okay, I guess we got the wooden bridge on our money.
Okay.
I guess just the other thing to remind everybody is that the $2,286,000 figure that you have there, we pay, we pay 25% of that, which is about $75,000. So it's about $1,000 a year for the wooden bridge.
If we can convince them to give us a grant. But you, I mean, I think you've got a better chance with something like this with a wooden bridge than anything. But I think the big important thing is to get the road built up, because the culvert's deteriorating, but that's not the problem of flooding. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next time, just a warning, I'm going to do this time about, which, hopefully I'll have a picture of the truck and also which truck did it disclose of and how to do it. The whole truck.
And your chimney's completed?
The annex chimney's completed, uh, came out real nice.
Okay.
Smoke goes up the chimney where it's supposed to.
Good. Excellent. Yeah, well, thank you.
Well, it is. Thank you.
Randy?
Nope.
That'll fire you. Please. Welcome, Scott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanted to come to the board tonight to talk about the fire department command vehicle. September, we inspect all of our vehicles. This one went down as well. It did not pass inspection because the cap corners were rusted out. Had biggles in the cap coils. And then also, we took it down to Coosers, all about you to look at it. He said rocker panels on the outside were starting to rust too. That, I got a quote, and it was going to be, I think, just above $2,000 to fix the problems that it was seeing. We cut into everything, you can see on one of those pictures, the inner rocker panel has been removed as well, because that has been, that's rotten as well. So now we're looking at about $4,900 to fix the truck and all the rust. So cap corners, inner rocker, outer rocker, to replace that. Did some talking to Julie about this project. So we're looking at some figures, miscommunication on my part. And then we went back and looked at Kelly Blue Book to see the valuation of the truck. That's in the packet for tonight. And it's anywhere from $11,000 to $14,000 for the value of the truck, depending on what you do, if you trade it in or if you do a private sale. So I also went back down to Coosers, took those pictures, and talked to TJ, the manager down there, to kind of get a reference of the truck. And the CIP plan currently, and that's a 2010 truck, by the way, sorry. It's supposed to be replaced in 2023. So we're kind of discussing that and the price tag of the almost $5,000 to fix it. But when I talked to TJ, he said that if we fix just that rust, the truck will last five years easy. I talked to multiple people, different maintenance people that have worked on these vehicles. They say the Ford engines last a long time. In the picture of the frame, there's not any real rust on the frame. TJ said that he could spray some foam inside the frame too, to help it. In the future, we can always undercoat it to keep the rust out of there as well. But I just didn't know the board's opinion on those.
CIP is a little bit far off, is it?
Well, I think it's unrealistic for, you know, a 2010 to last 13 years. It's a little bit long, based on its usage, I would think. How much is a new one off the state bid?
Off the state bid list, it ranges, I have to do a little bit more research. There's two different versions. There's a pursuit version and a PPV. The PPV version is the cheapest, which is $31,197. And that's for a 2017 Chevy Tahoe.
So let me step back. What is your need? Because that truck came from the police department originally.
Correct.
So is your need a pickup truck or is your need something else?
My need would be an SUV. Currently, the way the pickup truck's set up, it works for right now. I did get, they call them a command box, that I put in the back of the truck, that I can put a bunch of the files, the pre-plans. I haven't gotten to the board yet, I just got that box a little while ago. For Portsmouth Fire, they were just getting rid of it, that's why I'm talking. But the SUV gives you cover when the hatchback comes up. You can illuminate everything, you can put another truck box in there, you can have your command board, you can have different radios, because we're on different frequencies. And the town of Lee has awful radio service right now that we have to work on as well in the future, on portable radios. The vehicle radios work great, but when we're dealing with any fire, big emergency, we're using usually two different radios for incoming apparatus and then the fire ground operation. So every other fire department around here uses SUVs. I think the trucks have been looked at. There's a couple of departments that have tried them, but they're not working out as well. And basically, it's because of the, the space that the SUV gives you and then you get to be undercover out of the elements if you're using your boards and the radios.
You guys have an SUV though?
We, yeah, we have the Explorer, which wouldn't be big enough for what he needs.
I'm just thinking I might need time to look at anyone, it's, it's an old one. Because it's a 2010, it's already seven, eight years old already.
Yeah.
How many miles are?
96,000. How much money is on the budget?
Oh, yeah, but that's 2020?
2023. I talked to Bob Smith, because we had the CIP kickoff meeting.
It's like six years, but
No, no, but I mean, he must, there would be a fund we could buy this on, yeah.
Well, that's just the planning tool, isn't it? There's no
Yeah, I understand that.
There's no real trust fund, so
Well, could it, you mean, could it come out of the fire equipment?
Yes.
I guess I'd want to reread how the original
Looking for money, still looking for it, yeah.
How the original warrant was worded, but it might be able to come out of that.
Could we ask Mr. Tappin', because he has that right with him, I believe?
Oh, Mr. Tappin's up.
Oh, I put him on the spot.
What, what's the question?
Can a police, excuse me, fire department command vehicle come out of the fire equipment truck? It's not a fire engine, it's not a rescue truck, but it's a command vehicle for the fire department.
Do you use it to go to a fire?
Do.
Carry your equipment?
Do.
All right, could it?
Sounds like at least one of them says yes.
Do you know how much you got in that account?
From what I see here, $153,367.
I'm sorry, how much? And how much is a new vehicle?
Uh, just the vehicle is equipped, $32,000, to equip it, probably about $40,000.
Because what did you have, you have to put radios in it, you'd have to paint it. What else did you have to do? Does the thing in the back, you're not, no?
The command box, which is $1,000 to $2,000. The radio swap over to the current vehicle now, to a brand new radio. If I can swap that over, that's probably about $1,500. And then a signal head unit for the rear that can go off of the front radio and another radio, so probably another $3,000 in radios. And $3,000 probably on the light package.
The first one we have, if we go on the route. This thing's not passing inspection. What would you use?
Uh, right now I'm just using utility ones, just the pickup truck that we have.
Well, well, but The question is, do we get this one fixed? And how much was it to get it fixed, right?
$4,900.
$4,900, $5,000, so, so we spent $5,000 to refurbish it. Or is it time to get a
What, 10, 11?
The range on Kelly Blue Book was $11,000 to $14,000.
In fair condition?
Fair condition.
In fair condition. So
Right, this is a little expensive. You'd have to fix it, this is
The other thing that's not being taken into account, this majority of life of that vehicle is a police vehicle. They have a lot of idle time, and that's what a lot of people don't take into consideration. It's the idle time that damages the engine, and police vehicles idle a lot. So you can't look at what mileage is on the odometer. So, you know, yeah, they say those Ford motors last, but that's not, hasn't been typical use. And that's not, that pickup truck was not a police package. That was your consumer pickup truck that you just, you could go buy off the lot. So it doesn't have any of the upgrades in the engine, the transmission, the drivetrain. So, yeah, you could put $5,000 into it now and drive it back to the transmission pickup.
So, so what did Cooster, what's it? Do we fix it and sell it or just sell it as is? I mean, Cooster's would buy it. Is he interested in buying it or...
In just discussion down there, I don't know how serious he was. I think he was though, was that he would, uh, the bill that we have now, he would take that into consideration and give us some money towards the truck. And the condition is now because it's in pieces. There's no rocker panels or cap corners.
So the other question is, can you make do until July of 2018?
Yes.
Could you speak up for the...
Yes. Yes, I could. I mean, I'm using utility two right now.
Talking lower as you get closer to my room.
Utility two that we have now, it's utility plowing. It is the plow truck. In the wintertime, we do use it to plow, help out, plow out the hydrants. We send it first to for macrolaid so we can get it to drive ways. The guys use it for class to get back and forth. It does have uses. Most of them can be done when I get here to work. I mean, it's not going to really affect too much the day to day.
I would like to instruct the chief to give us a proposal in terms of what the cost would be in the vehicle because you have the state bid amounts.
Yeah.
And you have what cost to put all those pieces in, in whatever. And ask him to come back to us and I would like to put something on the warrant to take those particular, whatever that cost is out of the fire equipment capital reserve fund. That's what I would like to propose.
I agree. I did talk to Bob Smith about this because Thursday we had the meeting and he played with some numbers and just moved up the truck to this year. And speaking with him, he said everything would be fine in the CIP if we bumped it up, if we moved it up to 2019 for this year.
Great.
I think it's a proper move.
Okay. The other question that the chief brought up is in terms of what do we do with the vehicle that we've got now? Can we ask him to explore with Cooster's if they're interested and how much they'd be willing to buy it? How can we do this? Because it has to be surplus, right? How do we get rid of it?
The select board has broad latitude in getting rid of town property. So I think...
You don't have to go through a bid process then?
You don't have to.
Let's see what Cooster has to say and we'll go from there.
And if he's not interested, see if there's any other options?
Well, we've already run up a bill of a certain amount with Cooster. So he might say, hey, I'll just waive, I'll just waive that and...
How much is it?
$1,200 right now. And the only other concern he has was that the parts, uh, he already ordered the parts. So if he has to ship them back, the restocking fee or...
Well, just see what he has to say.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely. I could...
He asked you?
Nope, that's okay, good.
Thank you. Mr. Buggby, select with staff training in March?
Um, we're scheduled for the 31st, nine until noon. The only question I have is, is the board willing to spend, I believe it's $39.95 to have Toby Menaken go through the DISC assessment so he can be part of the group? Because right now he wasn't here. Because we talked about the cost before, I believe. So if the board's amenable to that, I'll ask her to contact him and see if he can go through that particular process. So he'll be up to speed with everybody.
Sure.
She will also have a meeting with him to discuss the assessment and also bring him up to speed as much as possible because he didn't go through the first part, so he's kind of missing that particular part.
Absolutely, we need to bring him up to speed, I agree.
Okay. So other than that, what was the date? The 31st and nine until twelve? Are we all set in terms of scheduling them?
Well, everybody knows about it. And then we'll just figure out when, as the date gets closer.
Well, we'll let Denise pick something.
Give me something.
And if you don't like it, it's your fault.
You know who to yell at.
Blaine Manon is the least...
No, 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 no. We're on the Town of Lee budget, not the...
I thought Denise was paying for it.
Oh, that's an idea.
That's an interesting question. All of a sudden you got quiet over there. Thank you on that. I deliver eight, Julie, love of time administration.
We received our preliminary tax rate from DRA Friday just before noon. And you have all of that information and should have all that information in front of you. Right now, the preliminary rate is $30.80 per thousand. The current tax rate is five dol... The current town tax rate is $5.44. The preliminary rate is $6.53.
$6.50 or $6?
$6.53 is the preliminary town tax rate. The preliminary, well, actually now this is, that is the rate for the education in the county, added 46 cents to the current rate. So of the $1.55 in overall increase, 46 cents is the school, state education and the county combined. Because the county went down.
Is that updated? Dr. Morse just told us it went from 66 to 53.
These are the rates that DRA is giving us.
So that's the 53.
That's the rate. Yeah.
Presently, we have how much in the...
Uh, according to the MS 535, which is not the audit report, but it is prepared by the auditor, $2,461,022. The document, there you go, that I handed out just tonight is just a little bit more detail than you might have seen in what the DRA prepares. So the total appropriations are $15,338,186. So the current fund balance policy calls for retaining 10% of that, which would be $1,533,819.
And unpaid taxes?
Well, again, that's the figure that we talked about a few meetings ago. The auditor did send number crunching on that and applied here. Five-year average is that we have $175,000 unpaid taxes from year to year. The unassigned fund balance, I think he put $50,000 towards unpaid taxes in that. But I mean, again, the difference between the unassigned fund balance as it's been presented right now and the 10% is $927,000. Not that I would recommend that we utilize that much. I guess my point in that is whether you want to, in your minds, apply $175,000 unpaid taxes to that or not, you still have a fair amount of money to utilize.
I'd like to probably throw $500,000 against the unassigned, against the tax rate. And how much would that bring it down?
That would bring us about to where we are right now with the town tax rate. That would bring us to $544. So we'd still be seeing an overall increase, but it would be 46 cents from the combined education account.
Opinion? Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry, but I missed the, what Julie said, the balance would be after we applied to $544. What would be the unassigned fund balance?
Oh, if you put $500,000 to it?
Yeah.
Be 1.9 million?
Which is, and what, 10% would be 1.5 something?
1.5 something is 10%.
There's still a piece of money that's available to us in there. Mr. Buggby?
Well, this year, we, the unassigned fund balance grew by $369,539. So...
$500 something.
What did we do last year?
Well, the fund balance last year was $2,071,483. And now it's 2,461,22. So something's not right. I don't know. I, I'd like to propose we put $300,000 against it. So it would give us an increase of about 3% overall in the overall tax rate. We make tax rate $30.12 approximately.
Why so low?
Um, I'll put it back to you, why so high?
Well, I think you were the one pushing for the 10%, if I remember.
No, I understand 10%, but we only increased by like $300,000. So you said three.
You said five. Why don't I just go with four and hold three with that?
Hold the whole thing. You say potatoes, I say potatoes.
Just a question for Mr. Buggby. When you talked about how we put $300,000, were you looking at numbers from DRA?
What do you mean?
That you came up with, that we put another $300 something thousand?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the fund balance last year is $2,071,483. The other thing we haven't talked about is what we're going to use for, uh, because already $20,000 is taking... That's what I have. If that's incorrect.
I'm just looking at the MS 535 and he was saying that it was $2,680, don't call me on that.
$2,650?
$2,680,000.
Well, we used $425,196 of the surplus. And we used $160,000 to set the tax rate, which should leave only $2,071,483.
Yeah, I thought that when we were looking at the end of year fiscal '17, we had $220,000 that was unextended. But, I mean, quite frankly, so it's 200, it's 300, we're still putting $200,000 or $300,000 back into the unassigned fund balance.
And also in terms of the calculation, the $2,461,222, you've got to take the $20,000 for the contingency out of that as well. So we've already taken that out. So $20,000 is $20,000.
$400,000 then?
If we did $400,000, that would bring the rate down to $29.90, which would be a 2.2% increase.
And then also don't forget you need to assign some figure to the overlay. We've just been putting $20,000 to the overlay in recent years.
That's why we should stick with that.
Yeah, because we have been abating too many taxes, haven't we?
No, but we still have, you know, FairPoint hanging out there.
How much longer are they going to hang out in?
All right, let's see if we can kickstart this thing. I move to authorize Tom Administrator to forward to the Department of Revenue and Town of Lee 2017 tax rate reflecting overlay of $20,000 and applying $400,000 from the unassigned fund balance in order to reduce the tax rate to approximately?
$29.90 approximately.
$29.90?
$29.90 for a 2.21% increase.
Joy, your second?
My second. Yes.
Any further discussion?
Can you do some work?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get, excuse me, I didn't get the full $400,000, but I'll probably get it somewhere else.
Well...
Now, there's always an opportunity when we write the board, do some of that to cover some expenses.
Basically, 2018, we did not use the unassigned fund balance for any capital reserve funds.
And I will be looking forward to that discussion as well. I'm just giving you a heads up, my thoughts.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to prepare going forward. Depends on what we do with this whole town center thing. But if we keep that particular fund balance a little bit higher when we go for bonds, they will look more favorably and we'll get a better rate. That's what I'm planning on. That's my, that's my...
Right, so.
So I don't really want, that's very dry down too, too much, but that's all I want to do is let it go back to.
Exactly. Well, $400,000 is a pretty good chunk of change to get back at that point. All right, Julie, what else do you have?
I did reach out to members of the public that were on the list of potential for the new Town Center, Town Center Vision Committee. And three have indicated that they are interested in serving. That would be Ben Jeans, Pat Jenkins and Dave Cedarholm. A number of other people just felt that they didn't have the time that they would be able to do it. And I believe that one of the gentlemen on the list is actually in Florida. Winter's in Florida. And just the other question for the board is whether, when you might want to have, you had talked about having a conversation about the plan, about the facilities committee proposal. And so what plan would you be giving this new committee to put out there to the public?
Oh, can we hold on that in terms of looking for people for the group? Because we said they'd be five. In conversation with Julie today, does that include one of us? Or is that five people from the community? And depending on what the answer is, we need to look for at least one or two other people. So I believe we've exhausted all the names except for one who's not even here until November, December-ish. So I don't know if we want to widen our pool because we've asked the people and we've got responses back from the 10 people that lives. So I don't necessarily want to delay the committee.
Well, I thought it was a minimum of five, didn't I say?
A minimum.
A minimum of five, right.
So we don't, we want three. Depending if you have one of us, that makes four, so it's still one missing. So we need to expand our group in terms of who we're asking to be on this particular group, by at least one.
You have suggestions?
I've been racking my brain. All the people I know are busy, so ones that are on the list already, so...
Are one of you two selectmen volunteering to be on that committee? Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry?
What did you say? No, no, say what you said, say that over again.
I know if I could say it that nicely without agreeing.
No, say it over again.
I was saying while he was talking about the number of people on the committee and I said, I wonder if one of you two selectmen would like to volunteer to be on that committee?
One of you two selectmen, I'm sorry. Okay. I apologize.
You seem to be carrying a banner.
But you're not, you've been carrying the banner. You were on the last facilities committee, the one that just ended. So it seems to me truly that it makes sense that you continue on to the next, to the next facilities committee. Because you're carrying, you're, you know, you've got all of the, all of the knowledge about what took place. And that's a good or bad thing, it depends on where you are, I understand. But the fact is, the fact is, you've got the history. You've got the, you've got the wallet. You know what, well, you know, we know...
Oh, we know money, yes.
You know, you've got to move that stuff. Now, you know what's going on with the bond or what the, what the bond issues are. It only makes sense.
Wow, it's starting to flow over here.
It only makes sense that you continue on to the next committee. Say what?
I don't know, I'm going to tell it right now.
It only makes sense.
I nominate that Mr. Scott Buggby be the representative to the new Town Center Vision Committee.
My second, I almost made it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, point of order, you didn't ask for this session, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Especially that, where's the bus? Because I feel like I'm getting thrown underneath.
That's no, that's not true.
Oh, no, it's, it's not a bus.
In fact, it's a limousine. Don't look at it.
Really?
Yeah.
We can afford limousines now.
No, I'm serious. I truly think you are the best one to continue on with the next committee.
I'll get you back for this, but that's okay.
I know you won't.
That makes perfect sense.
It does.
You had me at the first sentence. You didn't have to do all the...
Well, that's just, you know, I congratulate you.
Yes, but you meant Sally, yes, that's what that was, so...
No, no, that was Jerry McGuire.
Oh, that's right, that's right, Jerry McGuire.
You may want to reach out to the three that agreed to be on the committee, maybe they have suggestions.
Yeah, I, I went through that today and I tried to, I looked on my address book to see what, and either people are busy or we already asked them. So I'm not sure. Does anybody in the audience have anybody that they would like to recommend?
I thought John was...
He's, he's working his page... He's, he's working his paperwork.
He's doing something with her.
He's doing something.
He's quiet.
He's quiet. All right, let's see if we can find somebody else.
Let's see if we can move. The next thing that was on here, did, did we ever put in the charge in the inquiry at all?
No.
Is it something?
That, right.
We want to consider saying that we are forming this new committee and so far we have what, so many members?
Do you want to put this in and ask for people?
Because we kind of picked who we wanted to be on it.
I'm leaning on you since you're the new representative.
How about if we put it in and let's see if that prompts anyone to ask about it?
Okay.
And put the charge in as well, so they can read the charge.
The other thing we have to decide on is one of the things you talked about is in terms of the three of us agreeing on what part or parts of the plan that the facilities committee recommended that we all agree on.
Absolutely.
Because that's going to be important because if there's certain parts that we didn't agree with, we're not going to push those particular ones forward.
And I suggest we have a work session.
Okay.
Barely soon.
Yep. We have to do that.
Because I've got some questions on. About.
When do you want to do that?
Well, we can do a Monday in between the other segments meetings, right? We can do it next Monday. It's fine with me.
We need it on Thursday. We need it on Thursday anyways.
I have a feeling that it's going to go long.
It's going to go short. That's fine.
Probably got five or six social service agencies coming.
I, I won't be here on Thursday.
Including Oyster River School District.
Scratch that. You arranged it for me because I'm not going to be here.
So the thirtieth?
Thirtieth.
Which is a Monday, which is.
Yeah.
We don't have a board.
Oh, it's half a week.
Oh, that's right, you don't want to miss that. I want to go and get my glow state from the police chief.
Maybe they can deliver them to us because we don't have to go out.
I don't have the thirtieth, have what's on this day.
Nothing.
We're talking about having something.
Oh.
Having a work session on the thirtieth.
Okay. Works for me. Shall we do it, six-thirty?
Okay.
Denise, you'll send me a reminder, please. So help, use those phones. Okay.
All right. Next item is the local update of census addresses for the twenty twenty census. This is something that we don't have participated in, but it's strongly advised that we do so that Lee is fully represented, not only in the twenty twenty census, but all the things that flow from that. The primary purpose of the twenty, well, of any of the census are to determine how many members of the House of Representatives we get. But a lot of grant funding comes from it, so Karen Rossi and I met with Rachel Mack from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, raised her signature on it. They are willing to assist us in this. It's not any cash out of our pocket, it's just time.
So what do they, what do we provide them? Just information about?
Addresses. That's how the census starts. We have to verify addresses.
So all the new rogue names that we have in the interim and, so it's really addresses, not necessarily people?
It's not people, it's addresses.
Okay.
All right, I move to grant the town administrative commissioner, Renee, to request the information to the federal government in order for the census bureau to complete the twenty twenty census with accuracy.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
This case requires signature of the tribal chair.
Tribal chair.
Roof repairs at the public safety complex. I might ask the chief, if he's willing to talk on this, because he's actually been more involved in meeting with the vendor and Bill Stevens on this than I have.
So what this will address is we keep having the ice dams on the backside of the Sally Port. And it's managed to ruin the roof and the walls in the Sally Port. So I'm looking at it, trying to figure out the, an inexpensive fix. I thought maybe perhaps we put a section of metal roof on that down slope just so the snow would slide off of it, not be able to build up. So I talked to Bill Stevens, he knew a builder who did some metal roofing. And he came out, looked at it, he said, absolutely, we can probably go ten, twelve feet up and tie it into the flashing, so there won't be any place for it to dam. So once the snow gets to a certain weight or the sun comes up, it'll slide off. That'll help the edge from building up an ice dam. And then, I don't know if you remember, several years ago in the spring, when that large ice dam broke off, took the power meter out, he's going to build some type of a little protection over the top of the meter boxes as well.
I was going to say, because when it slides off that middle roof, it'd slide, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question in terms of that's for that side? There was a problem over here, too. So this addresses that issue, right?
Right, just address the issue back there.
Do we still need to address this issue over here as well? Would that be addressed with a similar?
That's the red side.
Oh, very territorial, actually.
On this side, we don't see any roof damage or wall damage, but it's the icicles hanging. And they get down to almost the ground. My concern as well is over this. I know Bill Stevens almost got hit or got hit last year or the year before when the door shut and came down. So just pretty bad ice damming on this side. We usually come out with a pipe hole, one of our tools, or helmets, or ten feet long, kind of get back and yank them off so that they don't hurt anybody, but.
So do we not know what we can do over there to fix that issue?
Ask him.
The same gentleman?
I, I, because I had thought at one point last year, we were talking about it, you, you can get the flashing that goes back about twelve, fourteen inches. And with the heat tape on it, maybe that'll help.
I was talking to a roofer the other day and he was saying that once that first, you know, flick gets exposed on a metal roof, everything comes down and you don't even get the icicle issue.
So we can ask him to take a look at that as well?
Won't we pass this and we can respect it?
Yep. I just don't want us to miss that because that's a.
No, if he's going to be here, it's cheaper having it come in, but we'll do it in peace terms anyways.
I know Madbury Fire, their public safety complex, they had the same issue. They just changed everything over to metal.
Oh, they made the whole roof metal?
Yeah, the whole center section, except above the bay is still asphalt shingles, but the whole center is now metal.
They made a transition flashing. I did it on my house, so it's the contour of the metal roof and it's flat flashing that slides up under the shingles so you can transition.
Transitioning, right.
Same color and everything over here?
Yeah, but it'll be green. I'll back to you.
Sounds good. Therefore, I move to grant the town administrative commissioner entry to a contract agreement with Harold Holt for the amount not to exceed two thousand two hundred dollars of complete repair work needed on PSC roof. Funds to come from the town building capital reserve fund. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And so obviously, if you can talk to Harold Holt, I guess, and see what they can do on that side, they bring it up next time. What do you think this would be done?
He said, when we started having him look at it, it was about two weeks ago. He said he can do it in a month, so I'll hold him within a couple of weeks and I'll find out.
Sounds good.
If we could just, we're meeting on Thursday and we're meeting next Monday, so you get something in the next few days, so.
Yeah, I'll see if we can get him in this week.
I'd rather have him come and do both of them at once.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
For the past few years, Walgreens has been doing a flu clinic, a free flu clinic in the public safety complex. So we have tentatively scheduled November second from nine AM to twelve PM. The only issue that I'm having is in years past, there was a contract agreement that they provided to us. And they don't do that anymore because we're considered a small community event. When I asked then, we're okay, but we still will need certificate of insurance. They don't do certificates of insurance. They did a letter that said, if you have an agreement, you're being insured because they're self-insured. So that kind of brought me full circle. So I told my contact again, I said, well, I still need a contract, I need an agreement, I need something. So I'm still trying to work that out, but hopefully we can work that out and still go forward and have the flu clinic on November second.
Therefore, I move to allow Walgreens to hold the flu clinic and the lead public safety complex November second, twenty seventeen, from nine to twelve PM that is open to the public.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. What else?
So everything, go ahead.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second, I have one question.
Go ahead.
It's under G. There's a charge here for fifty dollars and fifty-four cents from Wild Teeth Print Works, but there's no documentation behind it. What is this for?
Polo shirt.
I'm sorry?
Polo shirt.
Who is it for?
It was there when I flipped through it this, tonight.
Ooh, there it is.
Whoa.
Stuck in the back.
Because remember I commented about it? Oh, polo shirts, that's nice.
Motion, it was moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do you think they have different census minutes, too, anymore? I dropped your pen last time.
Oh, I forgot.
Come on.
It's costing me very expensive dates.
Additional seven minutes until the twelve.
I forgot to ask the superintendent about the fund balance.
You know, you do.
Could, could I ask you to check with Sue Caswell and find out what the procedure is we're doing that?
Yeah.
And if it's too late for this year, can we put it on the schedule for next year?
Wasn't it also the answer last year that they didn't want to give any of the money to just one community? How would they decide how to allocate it?
It's, I understand they allocated based on what percentage you paid in. So we would have like thirty to forty percent of it, so. And supposedly it's there, so if there's a big increase in the town, they can use it for that purpose.
Show notice again, it's over.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. Every patient may initial. In addition to all the process assigned.
This one here?
Yeah, one yellow, yeah.
Only one for two.
Oh. All it takes is two. All it takes is two. No, this is the, anyway, this don't, I don't know. I told him about that. I had a meeting with one of the people who moved there and I said, hey, you know, I spoke to these, and she says, how many more do you want? So we're like.
What is that novel you're signing?
Do you have any other chips? Don't make me laugh, I was a roll.
That's the federal stuff we have to sign everything, we have to issue each page.
I'll take them all to the seventeen mark here, so I can pass that over. Now I can pass this over and I'll start working on the next stack.
What S and a number is Oyster River?
Five.
Thank you.
Prize the gentleman in the back of the room. Here's a trivia question. What other school area was Oyster River in the distinct district with and originally studied?
Summer's work.
Give him another prize.
I, I was working through them.
He's on top of this one.
This is, this is absurd.
It's the federal government.
So you're fault. Do we all put initials in?
Yeah.
That's why they're pretty. So you can't say, well, I need to bring out the initial.
What we do wrong now?
What is this? Oh, you haven't done this one yet. Denise, are you going to fill in the date?
Yeah, I'm not doing that.
Yeah, we can fill the rest in.
Fill in the date?
Just stay.
John, you have to sign the last page here.
I forgot a page. Over to the first.
So you haven't done these?
Yes, I know.
Oh, I gotta sign this one.
You have to sign the last page.
All right, which one was this one? Does that mean I go to jail?
You signed it at this title.
I know.
I don't tell you, she's gonna...
I know.
Gotta stand top of those guys here. You're one of those rubber finger things, you know, the things that you do.
Can we have the finance department do an assessment on how much this grant actually costs us? Because you're burning through money right here.
I don't know what rate you're getting, but I'm not getting that much.
That was that meeting that you didn't meet, John?
Yeah, that's why I figured.
I didn't reach into it.
No, it's not. I missed one of those pages, I'll have to find it.
And you gotta sign the back of this one, too.
That's the one I missed. Just gonna hit.
Yeah, we need to sign all of them.
All of them?
Yep. You didn't sign this one?
I have intended to.
I think the chief did this just to make some use of it for himself. Given up all four at once.
I assume the chief read every one of those pages, 1 through 17 and 1 through 3?
Twice.
Of those applications, twice, I guess.
I assume this is a national initiative?
Correct.
So the mussels that are on the endangered species, are they edible mussels? Are they edible mussels?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering why they're on the endangered species. People are eating them?
I don't think there's many around. I think they're being chewed up by other animals.
Oh.
Is that one done?
I have no idea.
Final neck.
Whatever. You know?
What?
Sing it to the microphone, John. Got to go the other way. Go. Don't wait for me.
It's only 13 in that one.
Huh?
It's only 13.
Don't wait.
That is good news, huh?
Okay, I think that was it. I don't know my 10, I move the event to a non-public session of Hampshire RSA 91-8, colon, 311A personnel, and E legal. Roll call.
One second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Bo.
Mr. Bubbe.
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LaCource? Yes. Motion carries. I move to seal in minutes. First and second, a roll call, Ms. Bubbe?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LaCource? This is the sealing one. This one's public.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
What's the status of the town clerk? Is she started?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah. Liz Stone started last week.
Oh, really? While I was out of town?
Yes, yeah, last week, yeah.
Good.
Ms. Laney, unfinished business?
I would like to propose that we move our meeting from Monday till Tuesday at 6:00 instead of Monday at 6:30.
Second.
Forever? No.
No, for session.
The 30th.
Yes.
So that Mr. Bubbe, I'm guessing, can vote for a treaty.
No. Mr. Brown?
What are you dressing as?
Mr. Bubbe. Oh, I'm sorry, that just popped up.
Really?
No, I'm not gonna ride with the chief, passing out colored...
Glow sticks?
Necklaces and...
So instead of Monday the 30th to 6:30, the meeting will now be Tuesday the 31st at 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
Also, Selectman LaCource and Selectman Brown need a reminder call from the town secretary about the meeting.
Or email as such.
Okay.
Since this is my only recording device, which you see there?
Selectman Bubbe does not need a reminder.
All those in favor of the motion?
As I...
Aye.
The way I see it, the day is coming.
What? Didn't you say aye? Motion carries, will be Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. And the group session associated with, obviously, looking at the plant, as was described in the town senate mission committee.
And we all have what that is, right? So...
31st is Halloween.
It is, but, and it's the training session.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's what I was thinking of.
I didn't...
How come these don't get heavier as you add to them?
That's a quantum question.
Any other unfinished business with the board?
I got a date from the church. The meeting, excuse me, the vote was supposed to be on November 5th, but was moved by the pastor because that's a holiday. I haven't figured out what holiday that is to the 12th of November, so the vote is...
What about the seven days in between?
I have, don't. I, I'm just reporting what I was told. So the 30th, 29th should be where they're presenting it, the 12th should be the vote.
So our 12th is a Sunday, so I assume that they...
Well, it's the congregation.
The congregation was there anyway, or...
They come to some of the day services, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, speaking of dates in November, because Veterans Day is on a Saturday, I believe the federal holiday is November 10th, which is the Friday. So town offices will be closed on November 10th.
Yes. Is that everybody? So the town clerk is, is what?
Unless she wants to stay open.
She sets a work hour, so she can be open if she wants to, that's right.
So I will not be here on Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm sure you guys can carry the load while we end up being here.
I sent out the thing about the energy committee and the, what's the other one?
Agriculture.
Agriculture. The ag committee will be here on Thursday. I'm still doing the runaround with the town clerk tax collector. I left her two voicemails, my sister sent her two emails, and she hasn't responded to any of them.
Okay, she said to me tonight on my way out that she can't do Thursday because she has to work.
Oh, probably that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it'll be nice if she, can you rattle her a cage?
Yeah. What's the second chair on Wednesday?
I don't have, I say Wednesday.
Next Thursday?
Do you have your, you have your budget thing? Don't, oh, I thought you went...
It would be next Thursday?
Next Thursday is busy, I believe, because that's the...
Actually, next Thursday is less busy than this Thursday. Well...
No.
It's, I'm doing my presentation, we put somebody else, oh, the, and the conservation commission.
So... All right, what date is that?
November 2nd.
2nd. See if she can do the 2nd. I'm gonna try to go in and visit her. I didn't get there today, but she's the last one.
Good, we're rolling right on. Anything else?
Julie?
You both have copies of the proposal from the facilities committee, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So Denise will send me another one.
I picked up one today.
I also had, based on the email that was sent to the three of us, I had a conversation today. And...
With who?
Deborah. And told her some of, because some of the things in her email were not correct in my eyes. So we had a conversation about that. She seemed to be in a better place afterwards, but she's still...
It's okay.
Not happy, so...
She served a long time.
Mm-hmm.
We thank her for it.
Well, I did that as well. I thanked her for all her time and stuff, but filled her in on some of the things that I didn't agree with in her email, so... But I did copy you two ones, so I don't...
Quite a few things.
Yeah. Well, she and I, we had a good discussion, but I did copy you two, that would make it not good, so...
I guess so.
I'm just letting you know that I had a conversation with her today.
Sounds good. Anything else? Move to your turn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's all.